Thank you, and welcome to the Wednesday, August 23rd, 2023, meeting of the Redmond Planning Commission. I'll call this meeting to order and start with a roll call. Commissioner Aparna.
Present.
Commissioner Van Nyman.
Present.
Commissioner Sheffrin.
Present.
Commissioner Nueva Camina.
Present.
Vice Chair Weston.
Present.
I am Chair Sherri Nichols. Commissioner Woodier is excused tonight. Also joining us tonight and extending their workday are staff members Chris Wyatt, Seraphie Allen, Kim Dietz, Jenny Liebeck, Becky Frye, and Ian Lefcourt. Look for a motion to approve the agenda for tonight.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And it is approved. We have meeting minutes from August 9th, 2023. I look for a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the minutes are approved. This is the point in the meeting where we provide opportunity for public comment on any item that is not the subject of a public hearing. Do we have anybody who wanted to speak here? We do not. Okay. So we will move on to the first item on the agenda, Redmond 2050, Overlake Zone Regulations, second package, and we will have a public hearing for this. Becky or Kim, do we have an opening presentation?
We are not going to be doing a presentation today, but I do have the code pieces. So I think it would be helpful to go ahead and open the public hearing, get community comment, and then we can run through each of the sections. I do want to apologize in advance, I'm not feeling well tonight, so I'm not in person. And if I do need to step away during this process, Kim is going to step in and keep things moving forward until I have a chance to get back and join you. We can get started if you would like to. Otherwise, if you want, I can go through and just do a reminder of everything that is speaking tonight. This package is consisting of 2112, which is the Development Regulations section of our code, and the Design Standards, which are found in three different sections of code.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and open the public hearing then. And we have people who want to speak in the public hearing.
We sure do, and first up is Tom M.
You know the drill, Tom.
Thank you. Good evening. I am Tom Markle with Nelson Legacy Group, 16508 Northeast 79th Street. I'm here to speak about the urban pathways in Section 21.12 in the Overlake regs and by extension, the downtown pedestrian system. First, let me correct a misunderstanding. In the staff memo for tonight's meeting, under Community Comments, our concern is stated as "request to remove urban pathways." Well, this is incorrect. Our issue has only been the portion of the urban pathways, which do not follow streets and public right-of-ways, but cross private property to create mid-block connections. We object to the fact that the city requires that without any compensation, we turn over the land, and then also, we must construct a landscape sidewalk pathway, and then provide unlimited public access through anisement. If you're a homeowner, how would you feel if the city unilaterally decided it wanted a pedestrian pathway across your front yard, and then put the same requirements on you? A copy of the Planning Director's letter to my counsel, Clayton Graham, was provided with your meeting materials. I feel that the Director's letter misses the point, and here's why. First, it fails to address the fact that the requirement to dedicate the land violates Washington law. Second, the pre-review process, which the Director states as providing the opportunity to address regulatory takings, in fact discourages raising and resolving this issue. As we've previously explained, it actually creates a high-cost, high-risk barrier to resolution. And finally, the Development Services Center Performance Improvement Project is highlighted as an implied solution, but it will have really no impact in resolving this matter, and is a totally unrelated project. So what is it we want? Well, rather than a requirement, we think dedications for mid-block connections should be subject to negotiation and agreement as to both whether they're needed and exactly where they're located. Second, instead of just taking property, there should be compensation for the dedicated land, as well as for the cost of constructing the pathway. And then finally, there need to be reasonable provisions regarding maintenance, security, and control of nighttime access. We have real public safety concerns about this. So to sum it up, I would like to see the City of Redmond obey the laws of the State of Washington. I again strongly urge you to at least take the time to consult with the city attorney on this matter, and discuss the information which we have provided in our previous letters to you, letters to the planning staff, and letters to the Planning Director. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have David M.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. I'm David Morton. I live in Redmond, 98053. I support the proposed overlay code update 21.12.520, which requires minimum green building standards. These standards include green building certifications, Washington State Energy Code requirements, and green lease leader's certification. Energy efficiency initiatives simultaneously help reduce energy costs and greenhouse gas emissions, while creating a more sustainable building stock. Municipalities like Redmond can use building energy benchmarking, auditing, and upgrade requirements to encourage property owners to improve buildings in accordance with local sustainability goals. Benchmarking allows prospective and current owners to compare the energy use of various buildings of similar size. Benchmarking ordinance require owners to track their building's energy usage by entering energy use data monthly into tracking tools, such as the Environmental Protection Agency's Energy Star Portfolio Manager. As part of these benchmarking ordinances, municipalities can require building owners to annually report a building's energy use data either directly to the responsible local agency, or more commonly, through the Portfolio Manager Tool. In addition, most jurisdictions require disclosure of the benchmarking reports, making them available to the public. Local governments may also require energy audits, also called assessments. Audits require a more extensive analysis of a building's energy use. Audits also require a third party to perform the audit. A qualified third-party auditor locates the sources of inefficient energy use, which allows owners to identify the measures that can be taken to optimize building energy efficiency. Municipalities have the option to require that audits meet certain levels and/or include certain criteria that are important for the community. Qualified third-party programs include Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design, or LEED, the Living Building Challenge, and Green Globes. Living Building Challenge offers a zero-carbon certification. Such zero-net energy buildings seek to produce as much energy as they use through renewable resources. In two months, when the Washington State Energy Code may require builders to install electric heat pumps for space and water heating, Redmond's code should not contradict the state code. On another topic, as land is developed, the tree canopy is typically reduced as trees are removed to clear space for development. Overlake needs ordinances that facilitate the growth of tree canopy cover by requiring minimal tree canopy coverage per site or development, reforestation standards, and/or landscaping credits to developers that voluntarily plant more trees than required. In conclusion, I ask the Planning Commission to recommend that the city council approve Overlake Code Update 21.12.520, requiring certain green building standards. Thank you.
Thank you.
Clayton G.
Hello. So my name's Clayton Graham. I'm another frequent flyer here with the Commission, based on the last few meetings that I've attended and spoken at. I'm a land use attorney at Davis Wright Tremaine, with offices in Seattle and Bellevue. And I'm here again to comment for a few clients who are tracking these code and policy updates, because they either have projects in the hopper, or projects that will come online in the next couple of years here. I wanted to briefly piggyback on what Tom Markle said about the takings issues that we raised. You know, it's all in writing, so it's in the record. If the Commission would like to consider that with the city attorney, I think it would be a good idea. It's just important to bear in mind that this Commission is under a GMA mandate to consider the private property and the takings implications of what you do here in amending the code. And we're just raising this issue with you now, before the city doubles down again on this approach, that again, in our view, is just not really workable in the code. And the basic problem here is the code contains maps of these mid-block pedestrian crossings that developers either have to live with, or get their project advanced through design expense to propose an alternate location. And that alternate location may or may not be approved. So it kind of leaves developers in a quagmire, as Tom mentioned. A site-specific process would be more workable and appropriate, given the city's obligation to tie dedication requirements to the actual impacts of each project. I also wanted to raise a similar concern to the Overlake roadmap, which appears in the proposal. This is a road grid that was apparently drawn based on expectations of development that will occur in the future, but again, we can't know exactly what that development will look like. So we'd propose adding a note to this map, just to clarify that it's for illustrative purposes only, and that, you know, the location of the alignments and design will be established on a project-by-project basis. So that's one change we had proposed, just with respect to the Overlake roadmap. Regarding the 70% density threshold for master planning, I think we commented on this earlier. This is still a concern. You know, we've read the updated language, which we appreciate, but it doesn't really incorporate what's feasible in the market. So this raises the risk of zoning to a certain level, and then if the market doesn't dictate developments that hit that 70% metric, you're forcing smaller projects through a pretty comprehensive, longer master planning process. I think my colleague, also from the land use bar, Katie Kendall, will have a more specific proposal in this respect, so I'd urge the Commission to consider that. On the mixed-use requirements, I won't belabor the point much further, because I commented on this earlier, but again, this is another example of where feasibility matters. If you have a mixed-use mandate in the code, and the market doesn't support mixed use, you're going to end up with vacant storefronts in the city. That's not really good for anybody. So I guess, you know, in closing, I'll raise a point that I feel like has been stated by different people in different ways, but the city, and you all at this moment, are really being asked to adopt rules that could open the door to quicker, better, and more development in Redmond, which could include affordable housing, it could include new business, you know, other uses that will bring jobs to the city. And we're, of course, here for the development community, so we focus on the provisions that will make development more difficult, or more time-consuming. The problem with the current proposal is we're just seeing a lot of provisions that will make development more difficult. So I just, you know, the real concern here is a death by a thousand cuts, because once the pain point gets to a certain level, there are some developers that can just skip over to Bellevue or go to another city. So really, I think our shared goal is to keep Redmond competitive in getting good development, the type of development that everybody wants in the city. So I just ask the Commission to keep that in mind. As you review each new requirement, there's a cost to each requirement. So I appreciate the opportunity to comment. Thanks for your attention, and we do appreciate your work in this matter.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Doing something a little bit different, I'm handing out some, a chart of comments with a proposed legislative change. We always comment, and sometimes we don't provide solutions. So it's really small print. I will email it to Ian. Sorry, it's my home printer's really small. But I thought that might be helpful, just to kind of help with conversation today. So I want to piggyback a little bit on a couple of things that Clayton said regarding the 70% capacity requirement. I agree that the clarifying language is helpful, but there are some projects, and I actually have a specific project to give you an example, that, you know, every developer wants to build as much as they can possibly build that makes a project feasible. You're never going to build less than that. And there are projects that, with all the other requirements we have, building code requirements, fire lane requirements, which are pretty significant, and if a site's a little funky, you just can't get to 70% of your base FAR. And I have a project in Overlake that would not be able to meet this standard. And it's not just that you can't meet the standard, and you have to go through a master plan. That's a criteria that could allow a project to be denied. And this is such a significant go-or-no-go decision that has to happen at the very beginning of your process, that you don't want to go through two years and then at the end be denied, or not get granted the exception for lesser density. And I will point out, there is an exception for lesser density, which is great, but again, that's a decision that's going to happen at the end of the process, or in the middle of the process, not when you're deciding whether to buy a property or go under contract with something. So there's a couple of solutions here. One, I appreciate not wanting, you know, a one-story Walgreens to come into play, and I think that's what you're trying to prevent here. So one way to do that is to provide for minimum height and minimum density in RZC 2112-500. You already have a minimum height of four stories. That really gets you to where you need to be if you want to add a minimum FAR. I think that works as well. And then we don't really need this process that is, I think, ultimately going to just add more process and expense and staff time in a time when we should be looking to streamline. So that would be my suggestion there. And I won't get through all these, but you do have my comments, and I'll send some more in writing after. On the mixed-use issue, I've talked about this a lot. I continue to believe we should not ban mixed use and then provide limited exceptions. I really think we should focus on the streets where mixed use and retail is more viable. And again, this is kind of one of those, when you prohibit a use, you're then asking for exceptions or permission later that you don't know if they're going to be granted. So it's adding a lack of predictability that we don't need to have here. And so looking at where should retail go in Overlake and OBAT, it shouldn't be everywhere, because it's not feasible everywhere, I think is really important to do. So I have a suggestion to allow this use, and then focus more on street standards for those particular retail uses. And there's two items that are here in Section 2112-500 and 510B that also relate to retail requirements, and I just ask you to look at that in terms of exceptions. I have a project that actually is on a retail street, so everything I just said would be counter to that, but it has very limited frontage. So thinking through, okay, retail streets is where we should have retail, right? Makes a lot of sense. Does every street have enough frontage to actually put a building on the street frontage? Maybe not. So think through, what are the situations that a project gets into where we can't actually move forward, because the code doesn't provide for any relief? And sometimes we can do that through ADF, which is the Administrative Design Flexibility, and maybe staff can clarify if the retail requirements on retail streets would do that. And that might be the case, but that would be a helpful clarification as well. I'm going to close out here. The rest of my comments are here. I do think that on the green building, shifting to EUI targets is a good idea. What I am, and maybe I'm missing the information, there seems to be references to information we don't have, so it's hard to know what the actual requirement is at this point, but that is partially a lack of my understanding of these green building requirements, but I think there's some missing information. So it would be helpful to have both the consultant report that's referenced in the memo, as well as the supplemental information that would actually have the requirements themselves. So thank you very much.
Katie, if you could be sure and email that, because some of our Commissioners are remote and didn't get the handout. Thank you. Anybody else?
So my name's Sherri Fisher. I'm Chief Financial Officer of Redmond Woods Complex. We own property over on 148th Avenue, Northeast Redmond. What I'm going to be saying is going to be kind of a little bit of a repeat of what you've heard from some other folks, but just want to make sure you understand how important this is. So back to mixed use, okay? The proposed mixed-use-only development, in my opinion, seems to be counterintuitive if the goal is to build more housing. Mixed use works in certain areas of the city where there is demand and appropriate frontage. However, a one-size-fits-all approach is detrimental, as empty commercial space will only take away from what could have been additional housing. So obviously, along with other people that you've heard, I strongly urge the Commission members to review this proposed regulation and change it to allow standalone multifamily communities where it makes sense. Second piece, definition of live-work units. So incorporating commercial into the definition of live-work units would allow more owners' flexibility, which could increase the amount of housing units available. And those are my quick comments. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's it. Becky, you had suggested in our prep meeting, keeping verbal public comment open. Do you still think we should do that?
Do you? I think that this is a big enough change that I would recommend keeping both verbal and written comment open. We are not going to be coming back on the 30th, because the turnaround time for that packet is going to be too short. So I would just leave it open, and we'll continue our first meeting in September.
Okay. Then we will keep the public hearing open for both verbal and written comment, and we will move into our study session.
Aparna has her hand raised, if we want on.
Okay. Aparna.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Becky. I just wanted to make sure that we were capturing all these comments in the issue matrix, right?
But we can. If you direct staff to do as we will prepare the issues matrix for coming back, we can incorporate all of the comments that came in during the public session and a response, and that could be a part of your issues matrix, yeah.
Chair, what do you think?
If you want those in the issues matrix, then you can ask them to be in the issues matrix.
Okay. It would be nice to have a discussion on it, so that we understand this better, and we can respond and see how we feel as a Commission as well.
Fine. We typically don't, but we were happy to do so if the Commissioner would find that helpful.
I put it out to vote for the rest of the Commission. Do you all agree, or, I don't know? I don't want to be the only one.
You don't have to, even if you're the only one, it's okay.
Okay. I would like to kind of talk it through, or at least have a response, so we know, at least some of the comments that we heard tonight, because some of them have already been captured, I think, but yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Madam Chair, I would like to confirm that Commissioner Aparna did want all of the items reflected on the issue matrix, those that are already, but also the new ones, if that was the first point, that they all be included on the issues matrix.
Oh, Kim, I'm starting a separate issues matrix for this package.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you, Becky. And then I also wanted to make sure that our last speaker, Ms. Fisher, if she could provide her comments in writing, that would be helpful.
She's nodding. Okay. Do we want to go through the code, or do we have questions already? Aparna, Commissioner Aparna, what do you have?
Yeah, I just have one question on the green building program. I just want to make sure that, I think it's fantastic that we have addressed energy and emissions so well. I'm just wondering if water is going to be addressed as a minimum requirement, water conservation as part, and water usage, so. Thank you.
Would you like me to respond to that?
If you have a response now. Go ahead.
Yeah, Jenny, sure.
It was a good moment. Yeah, so in the current Overlake language, we do not have any mandates for water initiatives. So I'll be back next week to cover our full green building incentive program, which is, again, it's more of a code-wide update, but for this specific area of code, there is no reference to water.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm just wondering whether we want to put that as an incentive, or something a little more, you know, a little more mandatory. We don't see the urgency now, but we might see the urgency in a few years. So I'm just curious what the Commission thinks about that. Any thoughts, anybody?
Just a second. Let me get my thoughts.
We can always put that on the issues matrix, too, and it's...
Yeah. I was just trying to look at our, I mean, we're having a briefing on the green building program next week in our meeting, so...
I think it might be helpful to have the whole package, and then as we come back, we can have, as we go through the issues matrix, it'll just be one of the conversations that we can go through a little deeper.
Thank you. That would be great.
Yeah. And just a reminder, the things that got moved from the incentive package to mandatory were the items that were flagged initially as being mandatory to be included. If you want to do the incentive program, these things would be mandatory. And the public comment period in our testing phase, the community and the development community both stated, let's just make those things mandatory for Overlake, and then the incentive program is a little bit cleaner. So those are the only items that we have moved forward as proposed for mandatory for Overlake at this time. We did remove one, the requirement for all-electric. There's just a lot going on in that area of field until that gets resolved. We removed that one. And as we go through this period of review and comment, if there's anything else we need to look at, that is up to the Planning Commission to have a discussion, and I'm sure Jenny would look at it. So just because we only moved those items initially doesn't necessarily mean that we couldn't consider other items, but I do want to remind everybody that even tonight, we got information about, or feedback on, the more we do the requirements, the development feedback has always been, it's just the cost keeps going up. So what we are going to have for next week is information from our consultant with some cost information. We'll have that in your packet. You can go through it and take a look at what they did from a cost evaluation, and that might be helpful as well, as you come back to this topic of, do you want to move something from an incentive to mandatory? A long-winded way of saying, I can put this on the issues matrix.
Yeah.
Okay. But yeah, let me go ahead and share my screen, because I do want to walk through a couple of things. In your packet, we did have a lot of summary information that I think is really helpful, but we also included down below some of our, the biggest comments we heard from the community and how we responded to them. And so I'm hoping that the folks who... And so I'm hoping that the folks who've been following along had a chance to read through this memo, and if they saw something in there that reflected their comment, that's great. If you feel that there's something that's a really huge issue that isn't reflected, please feel free to reach out for me and be a participant of this public hearing process. The biggest comments that we had were the things, again, that you hear tonight. I mean, they haven't gone away, there's still an area of concern. So before we jump into that, I do want to just really quickly touch on each of these things so that those who are following along, or those who have not necessarily been following along, can at least get the gist of a lot of what's changing, because it is a complete rewrite of 2112. But there's some things in here that I think are really important to make sure that folks are aware of, and I'll share them with, tonight. One of the things that people are constantly asking about is parking, and we are moving forward with a reduction or elimination of off-stream parking requirements for Overlake. In some cases, this will drop to zero, and this is within our transit-oriented development-focused area. So this is definitely something that we are making adjustments to. There are some things that won't be changing substantially, but in other cases, again, a drop to zero should be something that folks should be aware of as they're looking at costs, and parking costs have been one of the highest item issues that our development community has been following and commenting on in the last several years. Some of the things that are not changing very much right now are open space and landscaping. Those are just really minor edits, but those will be updated substantially in 2024 as a part of the citywide updates to landscaping and open space. So what you'll see in this package is a couple of minor revisions, mostly in nomenclature and naming, and because we are combining all of the Overlake districts, 1 through 5, into one zoning district, we're striking the OV5 language entirely. So, just those are some things that are just to be aware of, that are in a weird awkward spot in the draft right now because some citywide changes are happening. Parking, open space, and landscaping will get struck entirely from 2112 next year as a part of the citywide consolidation. So all of the parking requirements from the city will be in one spot, all the open spaces will be in one spot, et cetera, for landscaping as well. So, those are something that folks I know have been following along and keeping an eye on. In Section 300, what we have done for all of these zoning districts, instead of having separate subsections within each, within the chapter for each zoning district, we have combined all the purpose statements and the information about those things actually into one area. Again, we're combining Overlake districts 1 through 5 into one single zone. Right now, there are a couple of districts in there that are different enough that they require a looky-loo with a very fine-toothed comb to figure out what the differences are, and there are some that are very, very similar to each other. So for the sake of making things easier for everybody, staff and the development community, we're combining that just into a single Overlake Village Zone. And also a reminder that we're creating a brand-new zoning district, so that purpose statement, that is all brand-new, and that is for the Urban Multifamily District, which is on the northeast corner of 40th and 156. Those are apartment complexes that are being brought into the Overlake Center. So we're creating a brand-new zoning district, establishing the purpose statement for that as well. And again, there's a couple of minor edits that you'll see. We do have references in our existing 2112. They have been moved from the back of the chapter to the front, so that folks who want information about related resources or related information within the code, that will all be up at the front, and those are being updated as well. So as you heard tonight, we do have some proposed code revisions in 2112-310. That is our master planning section. There's a couple of things that we're doing that we have not had any feedback on, everybody thumbs up for. One is decoupling the development agreement and the master planning process. Right now, they go together. If you're doing a master plan, you need to do a development agreement. We've heard from staff in particular that they would like to decouple that so that the master planning process could optionally choose to do a development agreement if they would like to do so, but it is not mandatory. So we are decoupling the master planning process from that, just to make that review process a little bit easier. If they are not doing a development agreement, they can go through a much more streamlined review process. There is also currently a section in that code that provides flexibility for how you distribute growth across your parcel. We are removing that from 2112, but it is not disappearing. Instead, that is going to become a citywide provision, and so that shows up in a different section of code, so that that flexibility is not just for Overlake, but the entire city can take advantage of that. What you have heard comments on tonight and previously is a new provision where we're looking at a future development plan if development comes in that is lower than what we're seeing today. And so what we have done is we have drafted up code provisions that says, if you are proposing a development that is less than 70% of your base density without your incentive program, that show us how you can add more growth to that site in the future. So essentially, treat the project if it's phasing. Maybe put the project, the building, up against the streets instead of in the middle, so that like additional buildings could be added later, et cetera. This is a part of a package of ideas to move away from campus-style development and to really focus on and maximize transit-oriented development. We don't want to underbuild this location. We also have a requirement in five years to show how development is going and towards our goal, and so we're looking at that. We do have it coupled with some proposed minimum building heights, which was also mentioned this evening as well. We're not saying that you have to come in with that level of development, but we're saying, in this code section, that if you are coming in with a lesser development, just show us how you can treat that site differently in the future to add more. Where we started with in this development proposal is that 70%. What that does is it gets us to what we're seeing today. So in Overlake Village, we're currently seeing 3.5 to 4.0 FAR. What this provision says, that if you're doing less than 3.5 FAR, just show us how you can do more later. We started with that 70% because that is what we're seeing today. That is something that is flexible. If the planning commission and the development community would like us to adjust that number, that is definitely something that we could take a look at. It doesn't anticipate as much of a change in Overlake Village as it would in OBAT, again, because it would be forcing away from campus-style development and towards transit-oriented development. So it is a bigger change in OBAT than it is in Overlake Village. But again, the 70% was just trying to get us something similar to what we're seeing today and using that as a new baseline approach. The Section 400 is our land use regulations. We do have changes in uses. We are making sure that Overlake is a complete neighborhood. We also got a lot of feedback from the community and the planning commission of making sure that it's an 18- or 24-hour activity level, and so the uses that are around-the-clock type of uses would be allowed in that area as well. It does include mixed use for every single zoning district we have, but the Overlake Urban Multifamily District is primarily residential. We had a lot of conversations with the planning commission about the types of uses that would be allowed, and so that is reflected here. The planning commission in particular was interested in making sure that things like daycare and education and small businesses and retailers were allowed. So all of those things have been reflected in the use chart. The biggest change, however, really is in OBAT, in our Overlake Business Advanced Technology Zoning District. They're currently only allowed a convenience store as the food and beverage, an allowed use. We are making that to, all food and beverage uses are permitted. So that is a pretty big change. We do feel that it really does support a lot of the complete neighborhood and making sure people have options to walk through near where they work and live. That's very supportive of that approach. We do also want to point out that the biggest changes in the development standards are related to FAR and building height. So as you can see in the chart here on the screen, what we are proposing as being allowed as your base FAR, which is what is allowed without the incentive program, is essentially what you are getting with the incentive program today. So what we would see today as a typical development would typically use the incentive program, but moving forward, that same type of development won't need to use the incentive program unless there's something that they're trying to do that's slightly different. So this was in direct response to two different things. One, we are needing to meet the growth, and so we have to accommodate the growth. And so we're increasing the base to make it easier to get those higher FAR developments so that we can make sure that developments are coming in at that higher level. The other thing that we heard from the community is, well, development community, is, right now, yes, the incentive program is optional, but in order for them to actually have a return on investment that would make a project a go, they basically have to use the incentive program, or they might feel like they have to use the incentive program to get to there. So they have asked if we could find a way so that that is not as frequently needed, and that is what this proposal would do. So as you can see right now, in order to get to anything above a 3 or 4, depending on your zoning district, you'd have to use the incentive program for Overlake Village and depending on zoning district, and with the new combined zoning districts, the base FAR would be 5. And then in Overlake Village, you can see that we're, that's not as much of a change, it's a 35% increase. There's a lot of capacity in Overlake Village today. The biggest change really is in OBAT and in the Urban Multifamily Zoning District, where we're jumping pretty considerably from a base of 1.55 to about double that to a pace of FAR of 3. I do want to also point out that with the new incentive program, if you're in the transit-oriented development-focused area and you max out the incentive program, we would lift the FAR entirely. You would just have no FAR restrictions. So this is a really big change, and we do feel that it will help get us towards the accommodating growth, and it should make some developments easier because you won't necessarily have to go through the incentive program to try to figure out if your project is a go, no-go. The other biggest change is in the building height, and it's the same approach. So the new base max will be very similar to what you get as you, if you max out the incentive program today. So we're going from a 5-story as your current base to 14 stories or 8 stories for non-residential, and then going up to 240 feet, which depending on use, could be anywhere from 20 to 25 stories. So the building heights are going to be completely changing, the FAR is completely changing. Again, what we're seeing in this change is that the typical podium-style development that we're currently seeing in Overlake will not need the incentive programs in the future, or the vast majority of them won't be dipping into that. And we'll talk a little bit about what that means to the incentive program structure and how we would prioritize that in our conversation next week on the 30th. But it is coupled with a couple of other provisions. The minimum building heights for 3 or 4 stories, depending on how close you are to the light rail stations, there are the provisions for the ground floor ceiling heights. Again, those have been established because we do have a lot of businesses that are getting displaced, and they need a place to go to, and we need to make sure that the types of development that is happening will actually be able to accommodate the types of businesses that are getting displaced. So it's a part of that package, and there are a number of other bits and pieces in there as well that are important for the community to understand. We have gotten a lot of feedback on the minimum ceiling floor height, so we have made a lot of revisions to that provision, and hopefully, all the development community has been positive about that particular change, and hopefully that'll work for everyone. That includes some exemptions, including if you were doing 100% residential units, they're affordable housing, that would be an exemption, and also there's some location-related pieces and parts as well, so. The other change is the maximum previous service for Overlake Village has increased, and that should say Overlake Village in the memo, I apologize for that. So Overlake Village has increased to 100%. It does have the same note that we have in our downtown, where we have 100% downtown, that there are other regulations that do apply that will impact lot coverage. We did get a comment from the community workshop that we did last month, asking if we could also do that for the OBAT zoning district, and I have a conversation that will be happening with our Public Works to see if that's something that we want to consider for there, but for right now, no change has been made to the draft. As mentioned, we are adopting a new street classification system. This is taking what we have today, combining it with the draft Overlake Village South Infrastructure Plan, making some updates, and using that as the basis for how we do our design standards for our public realm, including our sidewalks and how things relate to the sidewalks. So that is a new way of moving forward with how we do that. Right now, we have, if you have a building setback or a build-to line, that could be in three or four different places. This will make it very clean and clear. You have one place to go to to figure out if you have a build-to line or setback line and what that would be, and the design standards. All of these are identifying where the pedestrian feel for that area would be, what is it, what type of pedestrian activity do we anticipate for each of those street types, and it is very much tied to how close they are to the light rail station as well. And then, as mentioned tonight, we do have minimum green building standards. These are tied to what Jenny is proposing from a citywide standpoint. We have cut and pasted a lot of her language. I do think that the information that will be going out to, with the packet for the 30th will be able to answer a lot of the questions that Ms. Kendall brought up tonight about what is referencing here, too. So the draft appendix 10, et cetera, that will all get published with that packet, so that will be helpful for everyone. And then in the design standards, we've got a couple of minor edits that are happening in 2158 from a text standpoint, and then we're adding high-rise development standards in 2160, and in 2162, we are updating the design standards. One of the biggest changes there is they're currently only applicable to Overlake Village, and they will be applicable to all of the Overlake Metro Center moving forward, so that as we get new transit-oriented development that happens in all of our transit-oriented development-focused area, the design standards will be applicable to them. There's also a number of other updates that you can see here. And then there are a number of things that have been proposed to reflect how we are going to incorporate our cultural elements, especially in our intercultural district, and there are some universal design pieces that have been brought forward specifically in response to community members and our disability stakeholders. So there's a couple of them that you see here on screen. Those have been specifically in response to very specific comments from our community, so hopefully that is helpful. We can go through the actual code sections by section, if the planning commission would find that helpful as well. I have that ready and able to do so.
Commissioners? Commissioner Weston?
Hey. So I had two questions about the zoning map that I wanted to ask about. The first is, I just had a question. There's an area in between Northeast 51st and the Bridal Crest Trail and 148th, kind of boxed in by 520, that is part of OBAT but is not part of the proposed Overlake Metro Center, and I wanted, I believe it's all Microsoft property, and I was curious why that's not part of the Overlake Metro, sorry, yeah, why that's not part of the Overlake Metro Center instead of the Overlake Neighborhood, if that makes sense.
Yeah. Let me see if I can pull up a map we have on that, so folks can follow. Yeah.
Okay. Might not be the greatest, but it's something I can pull up quickly. So here we go. So I believe you're referring to Red West, which is section north of 51st?
Yes.
Yeah. So this section is all owned by Microsoft. It is their Red West campus. It is not currently proposed to be in the Metro Center for two primary reasons. One is when we were drafting out the, where we wanted the boundary to go, we were trying initially to keep it really close to the light rail stations and within that 10-minute walk. So that would be primarily where our TOD focus areas are, and that was, it did not go up to 51st. We expanded up to 51st and included the intersection to try to capture the roadways that would be most impacted. So the center design was initially primarily focused on trying to keep it nice and tight into our walk shed for the light rail stations. The other reason is because the metro center definition at the regional level includes some size guidelines, and we are already exceeding the size guidelines that they put in as their comfort level from a minimum and maximum. And so what we're proposing is already beyond that. And so we were, we recognize and acknowledge that Red West does exist, but it is far enough from the light rail station, and we were already oversized from that ideal size location for a metro center at the regional planning level. We have to get this boundary approved, or we have to propose a boundary, and then somebody else tells us if that's a go, no-go. So this was our proposal that we thought would be something that we could justify and get approved.
Okay. I, the one thing that jumps out at me is that's still on the rapid ride B-line. So in terms of areas that actually have a lot more access to light rail, that's still in it? I don't know if that matters. I just, maybe I'll just put it out there.
That's valid, yeah. And that is one of the reasons why we went back out and we had during our testing phase, that was one of our questions, do we want to push it out and just argue that, hey, it's on the B-line, so it is a rapid line. Transit-oriented development is not necessarily just around light rail stations. So yeah, that, it is definitely a valid comment. We hear it.
Okay, and then my other question on the map was, there's a weird little missing triangle at the intersection of Bell Red and 40th, and I was wondering if it made sense to consider adding that to the multifamily area. The thing that jumps out at me is all of that is the same type of development. It's all of that, like apartment style, like many apartments and buildings all on a campus, lots of covered parking, lots of uncovered parking, that were all basically the same era. It's very close to Microsoft. It seems like a natural fit to me.
The part that was originally R-12 in the old zoning map, or?
It's this triangle here. I don't know how to describe it. It's like if you kept going on 40th until you hit Bell Red. Yes.
Okay, so this section over here?
A little bit further, yep. Uh, nope, if you keep going east on 40th.
If you took 40th straight across.
Yeah, okay. That was not proposed, I think primarily the reason why we went up is because these two property owners for the Onyx and Eves were the ones that came in with the annual docket request and said, can we come in to the metro center? So we definitely went through and evaluated that. We didn't evaluate this. We haven't heard from the property owner in that area request to consider.
Yeah, it's a little further down, so it's south of 40th and right of that Microsoft boundary. So like your blue line there on the map is Bell Red. So if you keep going along 40th to Bell Red.
I think her icon is a little bit set off in the presentation. She might be pointing at the.
Okay, she might, you might be pointing at the right thing. Okay.
Doing the same thing, I think you may not be seeing where I'm pointing to.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry for the confusion.
Yeah, no, sometimes the technology isn't necessarily perfect on pointers, but, yeah. The.
Yeah, it's the triangle that was, that was R-12 in the old zoning map.
Yeah, so we didn't evaluate that in our SEPA, so that's not something that we could easily adjust to add today. However, that property owner could come in for an annual docket request if they would like to do that in the future. So if that apartment complex would like to also go to that urban multifamily and become a part of the metro center, again, we have to do an evaluation and approval. If we want to expand the metro center, it's not up to the city. We can do our work, but then we have to pass it on and get approval for that as well, so.
Got it. Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions, or do you want to actually go through the code itself, or?
Otherwise, we can start an issues matrix if you would like.
Commissioner Weston?
Sorry, just one more clarification. For 2112-500, talking about the ceiling and floor, one of the exceptions said for buildings that are interior to their lot, what does that mean?
So if you have multiple buildings on your parcel and one of your buildings is entirely interior to the parcel, that means it doesn't have any frontage to the road. And you see that with apartment complexes a lot. You'll have a building up on the road, and you'll have several buildings setback. The ground floor ceiling height would only be applicable to the ones that are up against the road, they're on the right-of-way, but they would not apply to the interior buildings. So the interior building could be all residential, and so the first-floor ceiling height, being flexible space, wouldn't necessarily have any long-term benefits in that sense because it's unlikely that it would transition from housing to another use.
Got it. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Ruiva Camina?
Hi, thank you for all the work that you've done on this and all of the updates, and especially the explanation. I greatly appreciate it. I had a question, and it's more of a clarification in general. One of the exceptions in, let me pull up the number, 2112-500, was around, let me scroll back down, exemptions, buildings where 100% of residential units are affordable housing of 80% and below. Do we have a large push to have many buildings that are exclusionary or that are only affordable housing? That's 100%?
We have one project in the works right now that is, that's the Sound Transit Surplus property. So we know that there are projects that would be impacted because they are 100% affordable housing. I don't know if there would be more. Obviously, the city has a significant affordable housing goal, and so we just want to make sure that for folks that are coming in at the project where all housing units are affordable housing units, that we can streamline requirements where we can.
Is that going to be a push to increase standalone affordable housing, or is the push going to be integrated into market units? Market developments?
Integrated. Yeah, our, our standard is integration.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or desire to go through the code? Commissioner Parna?
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Becky. Just a couple of quick things on the design standards for the blank walls. One of the other options could be to shade, like I know the trellis has been mentioned. Trellis, having a trellis is a type of shading thing, but maybe, you know, give them other ideas like, you know, sails or something like that, which adds visual interest but also shades the walls if it's, especially if it's south-facing, you know? That's one. And two, the vegetation of the landscape design, again, I think I mentioned this before, but we do need to kind of not talk about only natives but hardy trees and vegetation that can withstand droughts and high heat. Our natives may not adapt as well. So I know that we talked about this before, and there's some studies which show which vegetation might be better, so maybe reference that study and those plans. Does that make sense?
I'll have a chat with our landscaping folks and see if they can provide some information. I think that there's a lot going on from a citywide landscaping perspective, and so I think it would be helpful for us if we could provide a quick summary of what they're working on. And it's not just through Kim's team of the zoning code rewrite, but I know the Parks team is doing some work on landscaping as well.
Yeah, I think what's happened is, given the high heat and the extreme dryness, we do need to have a sense, I would rather not just say natives and leave it at that, considering that that may not be the best, you know, planting recommendations, right? I mean, we're just giving very broad guidelines, right? So, and the other thing is, you know, whether we want lawns or zerriscape lawns or whatever, right? So I, I don't want it to be that we're prescribing something which is going to take up a lot of water or die on us because of changing climate conditions.
Yeah, okay. I do know that we weren't planning on any major updates to the Overlake Section Code right now, because there's so much work happening from a citywide perspective that everything's going to be done all at once at the same time. We didn't want Overlake to have like these weird, like only you need, we have these, just because we're not ready for the citywide. So I do recognize that, but I think it would be helpful to get at least some information on the direction that those teams are working in, and we can get that in there.
Yeah, I think, I think it's just more for the entire city to see, hey, this is what's coming, this is what we're looking at, because plantings take a lot of time, right? And so I just want to make sure that we, we're thinking pretty and, you know, but native, but hardy natives, so I don't know the answer, but I know that you guys have talked about this before, so I just want to make sure we reference it. So, thank you.
I got it. We'll, we'll get an update from those other teams, and we'll put that in your issues matrix.
Awesome. Thanks so much.
Anything else? Okay, then, thank you. And we will move on to our next topic, which is Rev. 2050 Overlake Zone Regulation Study Session Package One. And we have a study session on this. We already have an issues matrix for this. We've got some open, open items on the issues matrix.
Yes, I'm Kimberly Dietz, and I can share my screen. We have just a few items remaining that are open. Just a minute while I share. There we go. Okay, so item number five was raised last week by Commissioner Sheffrin, and that was a question whether an alternative is available where art that would be required, public art that would be required, could provide a fee. And the city does use a 1% for the arts, and I give an example there. One of the things to be mindful of when the alternative or a fee-in lieu is being provided is that the space where the art would have been, would not receive that art, that addition. So it is an option, it is available. We didn't intentionally speak to it in the code provisions because of that nuance. But you can also see within the issues matrix, there are programs that are linked to the art fund, and one is leading with art and cultural engagement, so that allows the conversation about art within a development to happen, and it gives guidelines for that. And then we also have these things called platforms, and, yeah, the platforms. So platforms being the combination of art strategies and other opportunities to engage, activate, and feature art throughout the city. So there's a variety of ways that art can be incorporated into that. So I just wanted to check to see if that answered Commissioner Sheffrin's question.
Yeah, I think, I think I'm satisfied. Thank you very much for providing the additional information.
You're welcome.
So we can close that issue?
Yes.
Okay, great. The next item is closed on design standards. We do have one from Ms. Kendall, and this was regarding, this is in the land use area, and some of those were also discussed this evening. We just wanted to point out that there are some, in fact, this one was a correction, so that one has been noted, and does the commission want to close this item?
Yes, we can close this one.
It was the next one that I was starting to speak to. So this one talks about definitions, and the definitions in this comment from Ms. Kendall talk about mainly something that we are trying to do with the economic development program of the city, and that is create opportunities for local businesses, small businesses, neighborhood-based businesses, affordable commercial, and legacy businesses. In order to codify anything in that realm, we need to define them, and the definitions here are a work in progress, and yes, in fact, they do include information beyond what you would typically include in a definition, so we recognize that. We are not ready to bring forward any revisions to this, so what staff would like to do is to hold these and come back to them when the commission is discussing the Overlake Incentive Program, because that'll be a time to, one, it will allow staff to look into these further. These are evolving as, as we are looking into them. So this is something a lot of cities are looking at, so the definitions are evolving even at the state level. But then the other is that they can be discussed in partnership with the incentives. Would that be acceptable?
Yes.
Okay. Then what I'll do is I will close this item, but also with a note that it will be shifted to the incentive, closed and paused for incentive program. Okay, thank you on that one. This is another comment about the live work. Now, in this case, it was a definition, and the comment was that residential and commercial had been allowed in the Marymore subarea. But when staff was creating this definition, what we looked to was the city's building code and state provisions for live work. The definition that has been provided as a recommendation is consistent with the building code, so that our codes can be consistent with one another and speak uniformly across, for an applicant and for staff. We would recommend that the definition be maintained as the technical committee had recommended it. On a site-by-site basis, there can be additional discussion, but in general, staff would like to recommend that the definition remain as the technical committee had first submitted.
Great, so it seems like our choice is to either be inconsistent with Marymore or inconsistent with the building code, and so the choice is to be consistent with the building code.
Yes.
Yeah, we can close this one.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and those are the items that were remaining from your first of the three portions of Overlake.
Okay. Are there any more questions commissioners have to add to the issues matrix for the first package? Okay.
Okay, well, thank you all, and I believe that wraps up then the first package discussion.
Right.
The recommendation, I believe, though, would be held.
The recommendation. We're holding the recommendation till later.
Yes. Well, thank you.
Okay. Then we will move on to the housing element study session, but we have to wait for Ian to get back. Maybe we should take a break. Uh, Commissioner Weston?
Um, is the hearing still open for comment?
It's still open for written comment.
Written comment only?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
For package one. Uh, since Ian is with us, I propose we take a five-minute break since we need him to do the next part. So, uh, Chris will take a, it's eight, eight fifteen. Chris will come back at eight twenty. Welcome back. And we will move on with our study session for Redmond 2050 Housing Element. Ian?
Hello. My name is Ian Lefkore. I use EM pronouns and I'm the senior planner in long-range planning, and I am excited to talk housing with you. We have a few things up top before we dive into the content. The first is, just as a reminder, we are not talking regulations today. We're only talking the element, the policies and the associated technical appendix. Second, the regulations are expected to come back after more revision, stakeholder engagement, but probably sometime around December, November, that's when we'll have some more study sessions on that topic. But right now, we'll dive back in. We do not have a presentation because, uh, we have an issues matrix. And I believe that we have accommodated most of the feedback we received, and so we'll go through them and s- make sure that we did. Okay. So the, um, on the issue six of the element itself was opened at the August ninth Planning Commission meeting. And this was from Commissioner Parna about taking care of that maintain a posture of language in housing, uh, policy 24. And so here is the revised language, and I want to check in to make sure that we captured this, both the letter of the feedback, but also the spirit of the feedback.
Yeah, this is great. You can close this. Thank you, Ian.
You are very welcome, and thank you for keeping an eye on that.
Good catch.
And then the second one was exploring adding some more data to add a richer context about the implications of these housing situations, specifically regarding students suffering from homelessness. So we added some data about that while trying to make sure that the housing element itself mainly focuses on the kind of structural component, land use side, and then the human services element will focus more on the programmatic side. Uh, Commissioner Weston, does this fulfill your request?
Yes, completely. Thank you. And I really appreciate the human services element piece getting added in, like as much as not having it be zero. I also appreciate that piece, so thank you.
Thank you. Those were the only two remaining items. Uh, the other changes that occurred mainly were just kind of odds and ends cleans up, you know, adding citations, adding numbering to the captions. Um, but that was, all this is, all these substantive issues are now closed.
Commissioners, are there any more issues that you'd like to add to the issues matrix? I don't see any. As with other things, we will be holding a recommendation until later. Yes?
I would absolutely recommend it. It's a beautiful document. I mean, it really is. It's got just a ton of really valuable information in it, and it's well thought through.
But we will be holding recommendations until later. But great work, and we're done with it for now.
Thank you, everyone.
Perfect. Thank you, everyone.
Okay. So now we move on to staff and commissioner updates.
All right. So the, uh, the first thing that's popping up is that we do have our revised schedule for you all. So the website, uh, for the Planning Commission, topics under review is revised all the way out through the end of the year. The second scheduling component we want to remind the Planning Commission of is that next week, that's right, August 30th, we will be having a special Planning Commission meeting. It's kind of a briefer, uh, agenda for this one. We've got a introduction to green building programs. We've got a splish splash of Overlake regulations, and then Manager Churchill would wrap it up with a Redmond 2050 monthly update. So it'll be a little bit lighter as we continue our marathon of Redmond 2050. And that's it for staff updates.
I just want to remind the planning commissioners to look at the extended agenda because as we move to the end of the year, our meeting, uh, calendar will change slightly as we move into November and December because of the holidays. And so we will be meeting on the first Wednesdays in November and December. So just something to keep in mind. If you get too much of a rut, you know, you'll show up on the wrong day, so. Commissioner, former Commissioner Captain has been known to do that. Any other commissioner updates? All right then. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.